Call a meeting order, roll call please. Here.
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 Councilmember Antonio?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene? And councilmember Anderson?
Here.
There's a quorum.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn for council pictures.
Make a motion to adjourn for council pictures.
I second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn for council pictures. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned until six o'clock. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn from our picture-taking.
Make a motion, we adjourn from the picture-taking.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn from the picture-taking. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries now. If we could stand for a moment of silence and then we'll go into the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. This time I have one request, looks like another one's on its way. Ruth Harrison?
Good evening, mayor and council. Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. On Main Street, a couple of weeks ago, two young men were measuring distances on both sides of the street. Subsequently, I learned that the town is planning to resurface Main Street. That caught my attention because of the historic importance of the concrete roadway. I'm here tonight to request that the council hold a work session before any work begins. That will allow the council and the public to know and agree upon the scope of the work, including the resurfacing materials, changes across walks, and plans for beautification such as trees, benches, and trash receptacles. I strongly urge you to discuss these matters at a work session to which the public is invited. Then we'll all be able to know what's going on. Thank you.
And Charles, I'm gonna direct you to go ahead and set that up. I think it's a very good idea. I think it's something the town has the opportunity to have input into any decision we make on it. And I don't know much about it, and I don't know if the rest of the council does. Okay? Thank you, Ruth. Okay. Kathy? Adam?
Mayor, vice mayor, council. My name is Kathy Adam. I reside here in Florence at 240 East Ruggles. I'm here as an individual, but I'm also on the Historic District Advisory Commission. And my topic was the Quinn Building, to make it a short topic. But really, what I'm here to ask is that I know that Mark's group has done a very good job and has an adaptive reuse program. I know that we have quite a few buildings in this town that are falling into disrepair. I very much would like to see the adaptive reuse program and anything that you can do to encourage the landowners who are letting their buildings fall into disrepair, make use of some of the programs in the town health so that their buildings can be brought up to usable buildings and they can generate an income before it becomes a public safety issue. I understand what's happened with the Quinn Building. I'm very pleased that the council took all the action you did to try to save it, but it's beyond repair. And of course, at this point, the costs are prohibitive. But if we act sooner, and maybe if we encourage the landowners to use the program and work with the town and keep their buildings in better condition, it won't reach the state of the Quinn Building where, as a Historic District Commissioner, we had to vote to demolish a historic building. That's, you know, we don't want to be in that position, but we understand that it is a public safety hazard. So I just would like to see some more done, maybe in terms of publicizing programs in the town newsletter, or things that encourage these folks to keep their buildings up. Thank you.
And again, I'll direct staff to be putting together some sort of report to the council on what programs are available and what the council can do on that. I think it's a very good suggestion. Thank you, Kathy.
Item seven, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects to the time the agenda item is called. A, award of 2015 fleet replacement bids. One, one 2015 Ford Explorer for the Parks and Recreation Department from Chapman Ford in the amount not to exceed $26,539.11. Number two, two 2015 Chevy Silverado 2500 HDs, one for Public Works Department and one for the Utilities Department from Garrett Motors in an amount not to exceed $61,078.90. Item three, one 2015 Dodge Ram 2500 Crew 4x4 for the Utilities Department from Larry H. Miller Dodge Ram in an amount not to exceed $49,726.67. Item four, two 2015 Chevy Tahos for the Police Department from Midway Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $65,009.30. B, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Florence and the Arizona Department of Transportation for the purpose of utilizing the traffic and criminal software, a mobile crash reporting system necessary to create electronic crash reports and issue citations through a secured wireless network. C, enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Florence and the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for the purpose of providing additional manpower necessary to provide law enforcement services to those persons in attendance at the country thunder events. D, approval accepting the register of demands ending December 31, 2014 in the amount of $2,826,9252. Mayor, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
No.
I would like item 7A4 off the agenda. Do any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? See no movement, I'll call for, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with removing the item 7A4.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 7A4. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 7A4, two 2015 Chevy Chevrolet Tahos for the Police Department from Midway Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed $65,009.30.
I'll need to recuse myself from this item. I have a family member that is a K-9 officer.
Does any other member of the council have any discussion on that? Do we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve item 7A4.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve item 7A4. You'll put down there, she's exonerated herself?
For Gleene abusing herself.
Becky, that'll be in the minutes. We have a motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, unfinished business. A, ordinance number 625-15, discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the Johnson Ranch Estates planned unit development, Public hearing and first reading held on January 20, 2015. Mr. Eckoff?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council. When we last met, we had the public hearing on this item and I went over the project in detail. Tonight, I'd be happy to address any questions that you have. It is on the agenda now as an action item tonight. Approval of the ordinance as you have in your packet. I do know that member Anderson has expressed some concern about the local street right-of-way, and perhaps that's a discussion item that comes up. That or anything else, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Does any member of the council have any questions on this? John?
Yes. I still have a concern about the width of the streets. I've done some more research and found that the US Department of Transportation shows that interior lane streets should be like 10 to 12 foot per lane. Our Exhibit 7 talks about the travel lanes being 14 foot wide. That's acceptable if that is really a travel lane. If you're going to park in it, that doesn't make it a travel lane. So, you know, my suggestion either is make this on parking or we make them wider.
Does any, any discussion?
Those are 50 foot wide, right? Is that what it is?
Well, mayor, members of the council, the actual right-of-way is a 50-foot right-of-way. Member Anderson is correct that in the proposed roadway standard, which is actually similar to what you have in Anthem at Merrill Ranch and Parkside and Sun City, the travel lanes are 14 foot each. So then there's a two-foot area for curb and gutter, and then there's sidewalk. In this case, the sidewalks are five foot. There's a little bit of additional area outside of that that's still right-of-way, but it's typically where there might be a public utility easement. We could put utilities of various sorts, a water line or something like that. But the travel lanes are indeed 14 foot, plus the two foot on each side for the curb and gutter. And that is the standard in the Anthem community today, so it's one that we could all go and see. It also is the standard that is in our small area transportation plan for a local residential street, a 14-foot travel lane. It is pretty consistent. I do know that some have expressed the concern about when you have cars parking on each side of the road, it does obviously narrow the travel lane. That is a common instance, though.
Well, this particular proposal was standard, or maybe it still is a standard, but a standard for 10, 20 years. But all these subdivisions had HOAs that stated no parking. Well, the state has outlawed that now, and so it's caused a problem within these subdivisions. I know I live in one, and we have a parking problem. I just don't think, and it's a safety issue. I'm sorry that Mr. Costa's not here tonight because he and I talked about this a couple of years ago. We found out from the US Department of Transportation that the narrow streets, the more narrow they are, the higher the accident rates are on them. So I really have a problem with us having, you know, this street this narrow if we're going to allow parking on it.
Let me ask you a question, John. You were citing something on lane?
Lane.
Okay. Lane to me would be some sort of dividing line?
Yes.
As far as I know, in the residential streets out at Anthem, there are no divided lines, or there's no lines down the streets inside the subdivision where the houses are, is that correct?
Correct.
That would be the same thing as what's been approved by the Planning and Zoning on this project.
On a local street, that's correct.
On a local street, we don't have any center lines going down.
It would be a collector, an arterial where you would start to see the lanes actually defined, whether it's a bike lane or travel lanes or a median lane.
And didn't, when this issue came up, when you were on the Planning and Zoning, didn't we have a report from our fire chief that says even if there were vehicles parked on both sides of the road, that they could get a fire truck down there?
I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we did. We actually took the truck out there and measured it as far as the spaces that we had on both sides of the truck, even with cars parked on both sides in the gutter. Consequently, to prepare for this, I did pull the International Fire Code from 2006, which was adopted in the town. And even the fire code doesn't mandate us to restrict any parking or anything on a residential street unless it goes below 26 feet.
And what's the roadway out there that we have, the right-of-way on the roads? More than 26, correct?
In the Anthem community, we have the 14-foot travel lanes.
And you've got 14-foot travel lane, and sidewalk, you've got five feet?
Yes, the actual right-of-way in Anthem is a little bit different because of how they do the PUEs, but it's a 40-foot right-of-way. So you've got 14-foot travel lane, a 14-foot travel lane on each side. You have a two-foot curb and gutter, and then you have a four-foot sidewalk on each side of the road. And then you have a PUE outside of that for public utilities. So that PUE utility area can either sometimes be within the right-of-way or it can be outside of it as a freestanding easement.
And on the Johnson project, what is the roadway in the subdivision? Is it more than what it is in Anthem?
They'll have the same travel, the travel lanes and curb and gutter. They've actually have shown a five-foot sidewalk instead of a four-foot sidewalk. And then there's an additional right-of-way area beyond the sidewalk for a total all within a 50-foot right-of-way.
So that's 10 more feet than what we have in Anthem?
It's a little more right-of-way, but at the end of the day, the functional part of the road is essentially the same.
And from curb to curb, was it 28 feet, 14 and 14, or?
It would be 30, from the outer edge of the curb. Mayor and council would be the 30 and 32, so you have the 28 and then the two and the two.
Okay, and most vehicles are, well, they have to be eight feet or less wide or they have to have a special permit. I mean, if it's a wide load over eight feet, so you've got 16 feet if you've got two vehicles.
Yeah, again, the key word here is lane, travel lane. And as the fire chief has said, your minimum is 26 feet lane? Lane, that's travel lane. If you park a car in that, eight-foot car, you don't have 26-foot travel lane. If you park two cars in it.
I thought you said it was 30 feet from the curb? The drivable part, in other words, the pavement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll read you exactly what it says from the code. Minimum requirement potential by the 2006 code, the fire code will not dictate the road widths in residential development unless it falls between 26 feet. It doesn't say anything about travel lanes. It says overall, generally, the width of the road.
Chief Zick, my question is, when you have a vehicle parked on both sides, there was still enough room to get a fire truck through there, correct?
Yes, sir, there is.
And if I remember correctly, we had more than a foot on both sides?
In some cases, we had more.
More?
In some of the places, we had more than a foot.
Well, I saw your fire department bring their new truck around the corner at my house. They had to stop and back up. Realign it, they got through, okay, but they had to stop and back up.
Okay. Any other discussion? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 625-15. An ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving the Johnson Ranch Estates planned unit development,
Second. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance 625-15 for the Johnson Ranch Estates Plan Unit D. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, new business. Nine A, discussion approval, disapproval of issuing a notice of award to Garnet Companies Incorporated for the North Florence Reservoir and Pump Station for the amount of $1,716,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract documents on behalf of the town. Mr. Mitchell?
Mayor, members of the council, this, we opened bids for the North Florence Reservoir and Pump Station on the 14th of July. We had eight companies submitting the bids, and they ranged from approximately 1.8 million to 2.4. Garnet Construction was the lowest responsive responsible bidder at approximately $1.7 million. And the request this evening is to issue a notice of award for the construction of that facility and authorize the mayor to sign documents approximately about 10 days' time when that contractor submits everything. I have Rob Bryant with Waterworks Engineers. If you have any technical comments that are questions that you'd like answered.
Do any members of the council have any question? I've got one. We have enough room up there to build this tank? Now, we're talking about a tank. You call it a reservoir, is it a water tank?
It's a tank, yes, sir.
Okay. And we have enough land up there to put it in with the existing tank that's in place?
Yes, sir, we do.
There will be no disruption to the service to the citizens of Florence Gardens?
Uh, no, there will not.
During the construction period, maybe during the changeover there might be, but...
Well, the existing tank, Mr. Mayor, is going to stay in service.
Okay.
And when we put the new tank in, it'll be plugged to, or plumbed to operate in series. So I think we're okay.
Long we've got the ground up there to do it in, we're... Now, are we gonna be fencing that area?
Yes, sir, there'll be a block wall around the whole perimeter of the site, including the old tank.
No barbed wire?
There will be some wire on the inside of the fence to prevent, to prevent people from climbing and gaining access and creating havoc.
And it'll comply with all the security measures in place for tanks like this for the National Security Code?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Need a motion? Make a motion to issue a notice of award to Garnet Companies Incorporated for the North Florence Reservoir and Pump Station in the amount not to exceed $1,716,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to approve the issuance of a notice of award to Garnet Companies Incorporated for the North Florence Reservoir and Pump Station for the amount not to exceed $1,716,000. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Item nine B, resolution number 1495-15, discussion approval, disapproval, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving a town core incentive plan request for Pinellas County APN 202-07-0890, case PZC-06-15-INF. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor and council, it's interesting that there was a comment earlier tonight about some of the tools that we have in place and some of the ways that we can help to save some of these older buildings in the town, kind of as a nice segue for what we have tonight. One of the tools that we do have is the Town Core Incentive Plan. If you recall, the Adaptive Reuse Program was also kind of piggybacked under the Town Core Infill Plan. We also have various zoning tools, flexible zoning and so forth, that we can utilize, the ability to modify fees in the core in town. But the scenario that we had tonight with this application is that we had a homeowner come to us with a request to provide separate utilities on a home. And as we researched the matter, we were, we discovered that there was two homes that have sat on this one parcel of land probably for quite some time. And one home had been set up to have the utilities, and the other one was kind of piggybacking off of that, so it wasn't running its own accounts. So the new owner wanted to put, wanted to live in one home and then wanted to rent the other home. Obviously, it would be a lot easier to rent the other home on a separate utility account. We also had some issues, number one, of the, in addition, that the lot was actually technically too small to meet the current zoning codes to have two homes on it. And then also, the homes didn't meet the setbacks for the lot. So our options were pretty much to, you know, not allow both homes to be inhabited, which is not very productive, to pursue a variance method, a traditional variance, which would be difficult to do because of variance, you have to have more information on how the hardship was created. And this is something that's probably existed out there for 30, 40 years or more. But we, as we kind of researched our toolbox, we found that the infill incentive tool was probably the best way to deal with these non-conformities. So here's the main deviations that are in front of you on the screen. Is one, to have the two homes on the property. Two, to have separate utilities to the homes. And then also to address the non-conformities. So we believe really that the infill incentive tool, though we've had it for some time, it's been underutilized. It's a good tool that we have. It applies to the infill incentive district, which is pretty much, you know, most of your core of town. And we've come pretty close on various opportunities over the years to utilize it. And this is the first opportunity that we've been able to carry through with an application. We brought this request to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were excited about it and sent you a unanimous recommendation on this. And the commission and the staff would like to seek your support of doing this as well. And if you go to the infill incentive district, we've put some findings in there, but you can see that some of the important things about the district in itself was that, well, number one, the district was created and this tool was adopted to help remedy situations within this area pertaining to undeveloped lots, vacant structures, obsolete or inappropriate parcel sizes, relatively lower investment activity. So we have some challenges in the core of the town, and we needed some ways to help address them. This lot, as we found, does meet the intent of the district as it was adopted and as is intended to be utilized. I know we'd like to use this tool on much grander requests over time. There's a lot of undeveloped lots, there's a lot of older buildings that need some help. We would like to use it on a grander scale. Tonight, we have an opportunity to kind of have our first case here to utilize this. And with your approval, we'd like to seek your approval of this resolution here tonight.
Do any members of the council have any questions? I do. How come the third unit isn't shown on here?
We're aware of two, of two single-family structures on this particular lot.
What do you call the one in the back?
Not, mayor, members of the council are not aware of another structure in the back.
How come that wasn't checked out? There's three structures on that lot. And there was three, I happen to know, that's where I grew up, right in that area. That's the old Douglas property.
Can you go back to the previous picture, Mark? The old house.
Behind where you see the one 300 Willow? There was once a garage back there that they've turned into living quarters that that place had rented out that was getting its electricity from Unit 1.
Sure, you're not talking about on center?
No, I know where, that's the old Douglas property, Bill. It's right next to Dottie Goree's house, just south of there. And that alleyway in the back is blocked off and dead ends, right there. But there is another, there is another place that's livable that was put in. The houses you're talking there, those were put in back in the 40s or 30s, I don't know which. I moved in there in the 50s and they were already there. But the one behind was the old garage that they went in and made into living quarters back there. And that's when Professor James owned it. So what I see here, and I agree with the, what you've come up with, but I want to see a plan before I vote for this, is to see a plan for that fourth, that third unit on that property. And to find out how come everyone made part of the application or whatever. And to find out how come it wasn't made part of the application or whatever. Because there are three livable structures on that property.
Yeah, in the, in that case, Mayor, because in our, in our meetings, in our meetings with the, with the owner and looking at aerial maps and knowing the history of the, of the site, the two, the two addresses, there's been the three hundred, there's been the three twenty, um, we've converted it to the two seventy-eight, the Unit One and Unit Two. Uh, there was, and inspectors has been out there, there's, there, we haven't had that knowledge of the, of them or has it been conveyed to us that there would be an additional unit utilized on the property? So...
I would move...
We're just dealing with, uh, the two tonight. We're not dealing with a third structure, so I don't know why we would want to hold the customer up, uh...
See it on the map.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the way, Bill, because the application, what they have here dealing with the two, still doesn't address that if there's three on there.
Yeah, but he only wants electricity on the two of them, not, not on the third.
And the belief was that the additional structure that was back there was just an accessory structure and not, and not something that was going to be occupied as a, as a third rental. We've only talked about the two homes. One home would be occupied as a primary residence, one would be, one would be a rental. And then there could be an accessory, the, any other outbuildings could be accessory structures, and that would be okay. But, but this request is not setting it up to have a third rental on the property. So, we're only recognizing two, two, two addresses, the Unit One and the Unit Two, and one primary home and one rental home. So...
But it's all on the same, uh, lot.
We would recognize that structure being there, but not as a, but not as a third dwelling unit. And if there is concern about doing that, and, and maybe we need, we need to, if we do need to investigate that, we could continue at, at the Mayor and Council's, um, you know, decision to, to continue it to the next meeting, if you would like.
And the reason I'm saying that, Bill, is because that was put on, Virginia, whenever she had that, she put that, she took that garage and she remodeled it, and she put it into living quarters back there that was connected to the, to the electricity from, uh, what they have here on our map as Unit One. And that's, that building back there is more livable than these other two up front.
Being occupied now, though?
Uh-huh.
If it's being occupied?
None of it, none of it's occupied, but it's, but the electricity is still back to that building.
Well, I think that will be something that could be addressed.
We've had our inspector over there and, uh...
Go through that.
Oh, we've had our...
All, all we're okaying is the two on Willow. The one behind, we're not dealing with that. It's, he's not asking for electric hookup for that. And he's not looking to rent it either.
And the back structure, Mayor and Council, could, could have electricity. The issue was that if it did have electricity, it would run off the account of either the, the, the primary home or the secondary home. Um, so, yeah, we just haven't, it hasn't been conveyed to us that the back structure would be a third, a third dwelling unit.
Mayor, council, if I may. Originally, when this issue came up, and I think it was about three, four months ago, the individuals, what they said, when they purchased this property, um, they were unaware of what had occurred. And it, I think one of the structures was vacant, probably for a number of years or for a long period of time. Therefore, under the town's existing plan, we couldn't give them a C of O. And besides that, um, the other problem was, is that APS needed separate distinctions for separate, uh, connections. The other thing is to have the post office recognize two separate addresses. So, that's where we were trying to connect them, you know? And I believe those are the two things that brought this forward initially. And having that third structure there, as Mark said, may be connected as a garage, but we would make sure during inspections that it is not a separate dwelling structure, that these are the only two primary dwelling structures on the property.
Well, I guess the thing I look at there is, is the town let that third one go in like that a long time ago? And if we're sitting here giving the okay for the first two, and they want to go ahead and put that back in, in fact, that one in the back was the last one that was lived in of those three. And the man has since moved away, but he was, he was the only one that's, he was the last one to live there. The back one's the only one that was occupied of those three. I have a concern, you know, if, if that's a livable condition back there, not a garage or a storage area, but a, uh, an apartment built back there and connecting that one, how are we gonna address that in the future?
He's, he's not gonna occupy it. I, I, I went over there and toured this property, too. All he wants is the front two. The back building is just a, it could be a storage or a garage or whatever. He's not looking to put anybody in there.
I have a concern that I'd like just our attorney's information or perspective from. Where it says the resolution and it goes into it, it's referring to the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. So, as you read it, if we're separating and we're paying for the separation, he's not going to be occupying that second home, he's going to be renting it out for an income.
Right.
So, is that compliant with the regulations set forth? Or are we essentially violating a portion because it's not owner-occupied?
Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't know off the top of my head how the nuance of the regulation that applies, but, I mean, one thought I have, and when I hear your discussion, is that, uh, this is kind of a unique situation to begin with because it's an alternative route to make these occupiable, uh, rather than going the variance route. One thought that, that may be something to consider is, if you were going to approve this by this resolution, you could address your concerns for that, um, ancillary structure that the mayor is referring to and...
Speaking to your...
Place a, place a condition on it. Um, that's one route you could go with this resolution. So, you restrict the use of however we're going to define that, that other, uh, unit, whether it's a separate dwelling unit under the code or whether it's just an, it sounds like the planning department and the inspectors have deemed that it's, um, an ancillary structure. It's not a separate dwelling unit. But, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but one way to address it could be to restrict it with a condition.
Okay, but in not even looking at the, the third building in question, just looking at the two buildings, in going forward with the resolution, I feel it would be more appropriate to say, whatever the bill is, you split it because if you're renting this out, you're making an income off of that. It's no longer an owner-occupied house.
Well, he could end up selling it, too, you know? I mean, you know, we're just trying to get these two, these houses up and running. That's, that's, that was the idea behind our incentive program. I don't, you know, there's, there's gonna be another example of us standing in the way of progress if, if we're gonna... I don't know, whatever, you guys...
I don't feel it's standing in the way of progress. I feel that we're trying to make sure the money from the grant is going to the residents that are vested in the Town of Florence, that want to live in the Town of Florence and are contributing.
There's no grant money in this, is there?
Councilmember Walters?
I...
Yeah.
Where are you getting the grant money?
You knew I misspoke on that.
It's okay.
Thank you.
There's no grant money in...
No, I misspoke on that.
It's an owner-investor, and that's, if we want people to invest in the old part of Florence, we need to make it easier for them to do it. That's, that was the whole idea behind this.
And, Bill, I, I don't have any problem with that, except that when I looked at the map, knowing what was going on over there...
Well, you, you know what's going on over there? I mean, have you talked to...
Knowing what was going on...
Think the attorney's suggestion is the route to go. Just put some stipulations on the third structure, that it can be owner-occupied, and that'll solve the whole issue, in my opinion.
I think we need to recognize that third structure somehow.
I do, too, because eventually...
That in the, you can recognize it by saying that it can't be an owner-occupied unless they bring that back to the town.
You mean the third?
The third structure, right.
Third structure, because there was an improvement made evidently without town approval, right?
Back, back in, when that place was built, our code was very lax on that. And we had an inspector that really didn't stay up on it. A good man, but he didn't expect a lot of that. Uh, I got...
Mayor, members of the council, we, we could add a, uh, an additional whereas. Whereas, any additional structures on the property shall be considered for accessory usage only and not be considered dwelling, in dwelling units. And we could add that on there, and then that would, that would address that. And if he did come forward at one point and said, hey, I want, I want to make this third one a dwelling unit, we could say, well, currently, the resolution is such and, such and such. Um, it hasn't, the owner has not conveyed that he, that he wants to use that. After going through a lot of discussions, it's been very clear that it's just, these two homes on the front, the back would only be an accessory use, which you could have. You could even have a bedroom in there. The question is, ultimately, you got two homes that are recognized in address and that have their individual utility accounts. The third one clearly cannot be utilized under current codes or under this resolution as a, as a dwelling unit, particularly if we add that additional whereas. So, whereas, um, any additional structures on the, on the subject property shall be utilized for accessory purposes only and not be considered livable dwelling units.
Yeah, because I think they, they got a toilet, I mean, they've got everything to make it an apartment in the back. And I'm not worried about Rodney, I'm not worried about him doing anything against the code. But if he was to sell that place down the road and it shows three livable condition, or units on there, how much trouble would that give a future council or planning development when we could've taken care of it right here? I...
I think it adds clarity to add, to add the additional statement in the resolution, if you would...
If I understand our code right, you can't have three units on one, residential units on one block or whatever, or parcel.
Mayor and council, if you, if you have a, a different type of zoning and you have a larger lot, you, you could. An R-two lot with a, that was twelve thousand square foot or so, but in this particular case, you could, you could not. So, that's why they are utilizing this, this method to get the two homes on the, on the lot.
What if they come back to us at a later date and want to go ahead and hook that third one up?
Um, then, then that would have to be, uh, reconsidered through, through this, through this process. And we could evaluate whether that was appropriate or not. But I think, as we've looked at this, the lot is already pretty, pretty small. And, you know, the, the back unit wouldn't have any type of frontage, you know? It would, it would be pretty, pretty challenging to have three worthwhile livable structures on the property.
Okay, well, you know, if we can add that last whereas, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
But I, you know, I don't like to take a look at here and see what we presented by staff, knowing what I know, that there is three livable units on there. And whether he requested one or two, I, I don't care. I think that the council should be aware of the fact that there are three livable structures on there.
And we're putting a whereas on the end, saying that they can't occupy it, so let's...
There's not any more discussion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one four nine five dash one fifteen.
Second.
With the stipulation, let me finish, with the stipulation that the third structure will be, will not be occupied as a livable unit, or however Mark said it.
Will be only utilized for an accessory purposes and not to be considered as a...
Thank you, that's my motion.
As a dwelling unit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution fourteen ninety-five dash fifteen with the addition, uh, additional one whereas. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Nine C, resolution number one four nine six dash one five, discussion approval disapproval. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinnell County, Arizona, authorizing the adoption of owner-occupied housing rehabilitation guidelines dated January two thousand and fifteen in relation to state home community development block rent and state housing funds for housing rehabilitation activity. Mr. Felice.
Mayor and council, uh, we would like to, uh, submit, uh, we're, we're planning on submitting an application previously approved by you for housing rehabilitation to the Arizona Department of Housing, State Special Projects, CDPG program. As such, we're required to have guidelines that are approved by the state. And, uh, the changes that we have made here to the guidelines, uh, reflect changes recommended and approved by the Arizona Department of Housing. Uh, these were approved by the, by housing prior to the last meeting time. And our application is due February nineteenth.
Do you remember, go, can, question Bernie? I do. Bernie, under, I, I'm aware of one applicant that is put in for the rehab.
Mm-hmm.
The trouble is, the applicant has received the home from the passing of, in her estate, in her father and mother's estate.
Yes.
Does she qualify for, for the center owner-occupied?
If she lives in the home and, uh, and the title of the home is passed on to her, I believe so.
Doesn't live in it, she owns...
Yeah, you have to live in the home. It's owner-occupied housing rehabilitation.
Okay. And I, I'd just hate to see it because I guess that, you know, that their family's been here a long time.
Right.
And now she's got that out there that, I don't know what'll happen to it now, but, okay, that's what I need to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I need a motion? I make a motion to adopt resolution number one four nine six dash one five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution fourteen ninety-six dash one five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nine D, discussion approval disapproval of a change order to the Library Recreation Complex Design Build Contract with Low Mountain Construction, increasing the guaranteed maximum price by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to thirteen million one thirty-nine two two five for the relocation of the San Carlos Irrigation Project Irrigation Canal in Territory Square. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We're here tonight to ask for consideration of a change order in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to relocate the SCID, skip canals that border the project site that we're currently working on with the Library and Recreation Complex. Um, as you know, the Territory Square, um, Phase One project included master planning for that entire forty-acre site, at which point we are looking at schematic layout of interior roadways, uh, site grades, drainage, water distribution, and wastewater. And the original concept, um, as was presented when we, uh, early, started early on over the summer and, and just before, uh, we approved the contract in September, was, uh, possibly to consider covering. Uh, we referred to it as tiling the, uh, the canals in place or to pipe them in place. As we've worked through the project over the last couple of months, um, it, it became obvious that it would be most beneficial to relocate those canals away from the, the current alignment along the, uh, east and south portions of the project site. Um, this was one of, uh, kind of two major unknowns when we approved the contract in September. Uh, uh, the SCID project cost, there was an allocation in the, uh, GMP of about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, although at the time, that was just simply a placeholder. We had no idea, um, hadn't even begun discussions with, uh, skip and SCID. And then the other item, uh, that we, was an unknown still, was also the, uh, the furniture fixtures and equipment and, uh, how we were gonna proceed with that as the project went along. So, um, some of the early unknowns related specifically to the, um, uh, relocation of the canals and, uh, the other part of it that sometimes is confusing. I've sat through twelve meetings and twenty minutes on each discussion of what's the difference between San Carlos Irrigation Project and San Carlos Irrigation and Drainage District. Um, they're pretty, pretty similar, but, uh, a little confusing for some people. But, um, there was, um, the unknown was the big, uh, how much were the fees gonna be? Would they even be open to the idea of relocating these, uh, these canals from where their current location? Um, design fees, uh, we found out that, uh, after an initial meeting, that they preferred, they have a preferred vendor for engineering, and that's Cairo Engineering. And, uh, what would their cost be? We didn't know. Um, environmental assessment fees, uh, anytime you're moving those canals or any kind of work that we would do on the site, we had to, uh, assess that and find out if there were any environmental impacts or historic impacts. And then, um, depending on what we did with the realignment, the final length and size of the canal and the pipeline, and how that related to, um, the exact location of future roadways. So, with that, um, let's take a quick look at the north end framework vision plan. Um, it's, uh, obviously, there's a lot going on there, and these canals crisscross, uh, along a lot of, uh, different portions of that, but specifically on our forty-acre site, it, they border on the, the east and the, uh, the south. And then there's some other, uh, areas to the west that don't affect us at this particular time. Um, there is our Phase One site plan, which includes the library and the, uh, community center on the east with the little plazas just there to the south and east. Um, a future, uh, fitness and recreation center is kind of great out there. And then our, uh, the aquatic center that's currently being built, and then the, uh, the soccer fields and the sport courts over on the west side. What we had to do in order to kind of get an idea where we wanted... What we had to do in order to kind of get an idea where we wanted the skip SCID canals to be relocated, we actually asked our consultant on the project, that's working with Low Mountain on the project, Wood Patel, to kind of give us some actual coordinates of future roadways. The roadway that kind of runs southwest there is the Future River Parkway, Gila River Parkway, as we're calling it now. And then the road to the, the roads to the left, or to the west there that kind of formed that little loop there. And then the project site is on the south side. So once we defined where those actual roads were, we knew we could define where the SCID canals or the pipeline would go without doing anything to getting it out of the way so it wouldn't impact future projects. And that is the graphic that's up on the screen now. You can kind of see the Territory Square, a segment of that is superimposed on that site. And you can see where the proposed new SCID alignment goes along the roadway and stays out of any future areas that would be developed, any buildings, things like that. So one of the benefits of doing that, although it costs a little bit more money, is it takes a long-term view of the development. It's, we're going to be piping this canal so it won't be an exposed irrigation canal, which makes the property far more attractive for sale, easier development down the road. It's more cost effective to do it right now. We've been working through it, we were going to work through it anyway, we're just kind of changing the alignment. So it makes it a little bit more cost effective to do it right now as opposed to revisiting this later. And then it'll also provide us better access from the, to the site from First Street and Main Street. And then it removes the alignment from areas that'll have future vertical development. Again, it'll be an easement along a roadway or in the roadway coming south. We just, we'll never have to deal with this again. So it makes a lot of sense to do this right now. And then lastly, when you have the exposed ditch, I've heard a lot of stories in my short time here about kids playing in the canals. I know when we did our groundbreaking out there, you know, there were some kids playing in the canals that we brought over to help with the groundbreaking. I think it's just a good idea to get this thing buried and away from, you know, any kind of, you know, an attraction for kids to kind of play in. So it does a lot right now. Obviously, there is a financial impact. We're looking for $450,000 extra, a change order number one, which represents approximately 3% of the project cost. And we currently have the funding available through some CIP contingency and other projects that will not occur. And this would increase the GMP to $13,139,225. Again, the staff is continuing to watch the budget closely. We're doing some value engineering to make sure we have some savings. We're hoping that with that, if we take this $450,000 and kind of separate it out and look at SCID almost as its own separate project, then that allows us to leave a little bit of a savings in the other project funds and not touch, tap into the contingency that's in there for this particular portion of the project, which we might be able to still use for furniture fixture and equipment as we move forward. So we think this solves, you know, all of our problems as we're looking at it right now. With that, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Brian?
Yes, I do. Okay, originally, they were going to bury the, they were going to put pipes in where the ditches are now, the irrigation ditches or whatever.
That was the original option, correct?
Okay, well, that was in the original bid, right?
There was an allowance in there to do that, correct?
Well...
Councilmember Hawkins, if I may clarify that, the original, the original design concept was to tile those ditches, not pipe them. It was to tile them only. It was only to cover up the existing canals. It was not to pipe them. It was only to tile.
It was still going to be an open ditch?
It was going to be tiled, it would be covered, there would still be maintenance issues and liability issues for the future, so the ditches would still be left in place. We would just tile them.
What do you mean tile them? I've never seen a ditch tiled. They're either concrete or...
It's covered. It is covered with some sort of tiling, but it was not piping. It was just going to cover the ditches.
All right, well, are we going to get a refund on the money that was going to be spent on that, or is that...
Or apply...
Is that on top of, is it $450,000 plus whatever that was going to cost? Is that what we're talking about here in reality, or what? Or can we knock off some of this $450,000 with the money they were going to use to do the other deal?
Mayor, councilmember Hawkins, if I may, originally, when we, when Low Mountain did this bid, the problem that all these contractors have is SCID and skip are their own governmental agency. They will not give us costs at all until we get engaged with them, we pay the permit fee. So we are, they're doing their best, yes, they possibly can. But since SCID uses their own design firm, their own architectural firm, and their own people, we do not control those costs. Therefore, it was a guess at the beginning, and we did inform council at the time. The two unknowns were the SCID canal and the furniture fixtures and equipment. The furniture fixtures and equipment, we believe we can take care of. It was the SCID canals that we still could not do because we could not get a final price from SCID.
How much did we budget for tiling that ditch?
Approximately a couple hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay, so that's going to be a couple hundred thousand that won't be spent on that.
That should go towards it?
That could have been applied at the end towards the covering of this $400,000.
The total amount, the original $200,000, I believe, this project was close to $600,000 if you add the $450.
So you're talking that it is a $650,000 project?
It's approximately, yes, sir.
Utilizing that $200,000 that was budgeted plus the $450 above, so it'd be $650 for...
Approximately, yes, sir.
If I recall, the motion that was made to approve that, it was not to exceed a certain amount.
Right.
Councilmember Anderson, you are correct. That's why we had to come back to council to get additional authorization for a change order, because we are restricted by that amount.
I don't like...
My understanding, my understanding was that the amount that we bid on went to Low Mountain. This is something we have to do that we have to pay to San Carlos Irrigation Project to do, correct? Which will be completely separate than the actual project that we're doing for the aquatic and the library area, correct?
Yes, councilmember Montano, mayor council, that entire amount is going to go to skip and SCID. They're going to have to, between the design and the construction, they may have some of our crews do it, but that is SCID cost to do that.
And if anybody's ever dealt with SCID, you'll know what we're talking about.
It's not clear to me, why don't we stay with the original plan, as Councilman Hawkins says, put it in a pipe and cover it up?
They hadn't planned on putting in the pipe?
That's what they said.
No.
No, it was...
Well, tile, okay, I agree with Councilman.
And the tiling, you're, part of your problem there is you still have a liability factor that that's easier to go through than your covert, or your concrete pipe. It's a, and it's a liability issue to the town to have that there where you're going to have so much traffic. We made, or we worked with San Carlos and SCID on putting the tiles in up on Florence Heights Road.
This all came up by Councilman Hawkins at the time, and I know he got a satisfactory answer on it. And now we're saying, nope, no good.
This is a decision that is looked at by San Carlos to completely move it away from our project. It isn't made by us, it wasn't made by Low Mountain. It's something completely different that we have to look at. And if we do move it, it releases us of our liabilities that we're going to have in dealing with that water running right there between the recreation softball fields and the rest of the recreation areas.
Okay, so are we going to take the funds from Low Mountain, the, whatever you said, $200,000 or whatever, and we're going to take those, we're going to knock, we're going to knock their contract back? Because this, the way I'm reading it here...
Councilmember...
This is Low Mountain that's wanting the money. I mean, along with San, well...
Councilmember Hawkins, mayor...
Low Mountain, it doesn't say San Carlos.
Low Mountain is in charge of the construction on this site. They are working with SCID, they're designers, they're architects and engineers to do the work and get it done. This cost is based upon what San Carlos is telling us we need to do to keep it out of the project so that we never touch it again.
Okay, they're saying $450,000, but you're saying, no, it'll be $650,000.
This is $450,000 that'll add to the existing $200,000 that's in the budget. That is the total cost for the design work and the cost of construction for the relocation of the SCID canals.
Can we, can we take something out of the existing project to cover this?
$200,000.
Yeah, $200,000?
Um, mayor...
Take the soccer fields out or something?
Mayor, councilmember Anderson, I believe the staff has been attempting to do that. The two, the two areas that we were unsure about in the beginning was the furniture fixtures and equipment, and then the SCID canal, which we had no control over SCID. The furniture fixtures and equipment, we were trying to take out of the existing budget by value engineering, as Mr. Hughes had said, and trying to do that and making modifications of the plan so that we generate savings. So we are hoping there's still savings. We can restrict the budget, but please understand that we would have no additional funds for furniture fixtures and equipment, that we'd have to come back for you for that. You know, I think the staff has been working, as your consultant also, Jeff Swan, has been working to try and pretty much hammer down Low Mountain significantly on their cost, and that is what's kind of set us back a little bit because we're trying to gain every savings we possibly can. Because we didn't want to come back to council, but this one is out of our hands. There's nothing we could find in the budget to do this. There's absolutely not.
Well, it's not, it's not out of your hands. I mean, we, we could stick with the original plan, but, but you're saying that this is the way to go. I'm just wondering, are we going to have more major problems? I mean, I thought the whole deal was, they designed it, they knew what they needed to build, they knew what the design was, they gave us a bid on designing and building it, and now they're coming back, you know, half a million, over a half a million dollars more.
Councilmember Hawkins, mayor council, I do understand your concern, and I totally agree with them. My concern is that the SCID canal is out of our control. We could not get a design from them until we did a permit with them. We could not do any of that process. So that was out of our control. Are we going to come back to you all again? No, we're absolutely not. There's only one other thing that will come back to you all. If you all may recall, last month, we received a grant in the amount of $99,000 from the state library. So that amount, we could be coming back for library resources and stuff, but that is it. Nothing else will be coming back to you on this project.
Charles, if I understand this right, we're doing this change order, and it goes to Low Mountain. Low Mountain then will be reimbursing or buying from SCID all of these services. The town won't be doing it, it'll be through Low Mountain.
Low Mountain will be doing the construction on the site, working with SCID and skip.
But do we pay SCID or do we pay Low Mountain?
We pay Low Mountain, and they will do the work with SCID and pay them.
Okay. So in other words, we're going to put another $450,000 into their project?
Yes, sir.
And then they, and then they will pay to SCID whatever they have to pay?
That is correct.
Is there any way that we can keep an accounting of that to make sure that they're not exceeding that cost and taking from other parts of the budget to cover it?
Yes, we will work with, work with Jeff Swan to make sure that the total amount that we're now seeing for skip and SCID states to that cost, and we can make sure it's allocated.
Because I'm looking at here, and it says the most recent estimate from Low Mountain is 575, or 570,000, which is a little bit lower than the, so there should be another 90,000 there possibly left over.
I'm estimating that it's not going to go above this whatsoever, and we will keep close contact on those costs.
I think the accounting, to me, is very important, that we're not mingling costs too much, but we cover the cost of it with this additional half million dollars.
I just can't see how we missed a half a million dollars.
What's that?
I can't see how we missed a half a million dollars.
I don't think we missed it. I think it was a decision at the time to go with what we thought was best, but then after taking a look at it, to get, eliminate this ditch, this ditch, not a canal, I don't know what you call a canal, but it's a ditch, an irrigation ditch. To eliminate the ditch here on, on Main Street and then also across through the park...
I don't argue with that, I just, you know, my, my concern is, why didn't we think about this months ago?
Councilmember Anderson, mayor council, if I may, because we did not know. Until we got the project started, until we paid for a permit by skip and SCID, they're not going to tell us anything. They don't make themselves, they don't give us estimates, they don't give us anything.
You mean, our engineers didn't have any idea what this might, might have cost? Sounds like we have some pretty bad consultants if they can't figure that out in advance. Now, they may not be able to get the exact amount, but is this the first time that they've been to a ballgame? I don't think so. Come on.
Well, John, it's the same thing as what we're going through with SCID on trying to get the light in out of Adaway Road and Hunt Highway. It's the same thing. We have no control over that. You don't, you and I, the councilor of the county doesn't have any control over SCID or skip. They're a government entity that sits out there, and they could tell us out there that way and that, that we're never going to be able to put a light in out there, and you know how dangerous that thing is. And it's the same thing here as I look at, on the, I look at more of the safety issue rather than $450,000.
I don't have, I don't have objection to, to what we're doing. What I object to is the additional cost.
Mr. Anderson, if I may, if I may help you all out, council, we didn't do the design plans, so we couldn't do the estimate. They don't give us the authority. They have to do their own designs the way they want to do the design, so the cost will vary significantly.
I understand that. But have this, people, have they ever worked with SCID in the past?
Mr. Anderson, yes, they have. And the concern is, they're going to do it the way they want to do it. So our engineers and architects are not going to design it the same way.
Hey, you know, if you go buy a car, you know how much it's going to cost exactly? No, but you have an idea. Now, was our idea a half a million dollars off? That's, that's my concern. And if they missed this by half a million dollars, what else are they going to miss?
Well, I think from now on, we need to look at these designs a little more and maybe look at this design build. It might not be what it was supposed to be cracked up to be, obviously, because here we are spending another half a million dollars, you know. So I think maybe from now on, on any major projects, we need to know everything upfront. If we think we need SCID, skip involved, then, then we'll allocate extra money for that. But, you know, this is, it's not good. I don't think we want to...
Well, I think it's unfortunate that we have to pay more money, but we decided to do this project, and anytime you get into construction or anything, there's always that possibility that there will be extra costs. And if we want to do the project and we want to do it right, I think we just have to do what we need to do. None of us want to have to pay more money, but, you know, if we want to do it right, let's just do it, and we all have our opinions, and that's fine, but we have to do what we have to do because we don't want to do it halfway.
Mayor Rankin, I make a motion to approve the change order for the Library Recreation Complex Design Bill Contract with Low Mountain Construction increasing the guaranteed maximum price $450,000 to $13,000, or to $13,139,225 for the relocation of the San Carlos Irrigation Project Irrigation Canal for the purpose of liability and the safety of our community.
I'll second.
And a motion is second. Would the clerk repeat the message, or the motion?
That's a joke, keep moving.
I almost did, too.
Everybody understands the motion. Motion to approve the change order for the Library Recreation Complex Design Bill Contract with Low Mountain Construction increasing the guaranteed maximum price by $450,000 to $13,139,225 for the relocation of the San Carlos Irrigation Project Skip Irrigation Canal in Territory Square. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rankin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Who?
Councilmember Hawkins.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand you. Nay.
Councilmember Montano.
Aye.
Councilmember McGaleen.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item is the department reports. Does any member of, council have any questions or the department heads?
No, I'd just like to commend Chief Hughes on his very detailed report. It's so informative, I really enjoyed reading it.
Any other?
I had a question regards the 911 service we're providing for Superior. Have we had any calls?
Mayor and council, at this time, Superior's still putting in their equipment, so we have not taken on their calls for service at this time.
Yeah, I have a question. We talked about the Adaway Road, resurfacing of Adaway. Has that contract been led, or what's, what's the status of that? what's, what's the status of that?
Councilmember Anderson, mayor, council, if I may, no, we are actually looking at the current engineering designs for that, that three-way crossroad between Adaway and Hunt Highway. We, again, that's going to take a little bit more time because we have to work with SKID on that area as well. One, there is no electricity in that area, and they will control the electricity, and number two, in order to widen the roadways, we're going to have to get additional right of way through SKID on both sides of the canal and pipe it. So at this point in time, we're still looking at the engineering designs. We have asked, asked our engineer to look at those and bring us some solutions, at least a short-term solution to make some, so to solve some of those issues, and then the long-term solution, that will be a permanent one.
What about the Hunt Highway project?
Are you talking about the paving of the road around that curve? Mr. Mitchell has been working with the, the Public Works Department for the county. They're looking at resurfacing that, the county's going to do it on our behalf, there'll be some fee, I believe, to that, and it'll occur in March.
Good, thank you.
Any other question, any of the department heads? Hearing that, seeing no other question, I'll call to the public, second public comment section. Anybody wishing to address the council on any item discussed tonight, or anything you want to talk about? Seeing none, we'll call to the public, call to the council. Beckett?
Yes, last week I attended my first session with the Historical Advisory Commission as council liaison, and I just want to let everybody know that this group of people is very conscientious, and it was a very good eye-opener for me. I just thoroughly enjoyed it, and I didn't quite know how I was going to receive that, but it really was informative, and they want the best for the town, and they are very concerned about what goes on in the district.
Thank you. Bill?
I have nothing.
Valerie?
Nothing tonight.
John?
Nothing.
Ruben?
Nothing.
Kara?
I have nothing this evening.
It's up to me. I would like to thank everybody that participated Saturday during the rain and everything in Georgie's Run. I talked to her grandfather today, and they estimated they picked up about $3,000 in donations to the family. Of course, we all know that Georgie is still up in Carden Hospital battling her cancer out hard. Quite a little girl, she's doing a good job of fighting it. But I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the first Georgie's Run. I was told that this is going to be an annual event put on at the school to help kids that are in need, in families, which I think is a darn good deal. I, I know I talked a lot tonight, but it's, some of the things I say I went to the council, they've got a lot of things going on in town, we've got the home tour coming up. The one thing I would like to say is on our engineering projects on Central and Willow, I hope that you put money in those projects to do something with the streets after we put the curb and gutter in, because I was up there today, and that overlay or whatever we got on Central was only about an inch, inch and a half thick. I hope you've got some money set up someplace for that. And again, the overlay on Main Street, I do want to have a work session on that, I think that that needs to be done. That concrete's been there a long time, and that's one of the things about historical Main Street. With that, need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion and a second, adjourn to executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We're in executive session. Thank you very much for coming.